Good evening. I'd like to call our regular session meeting for the month of August to order. The time is 7:01 PM. Would you please pause for a moment of silence? Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Superintendent Fury, I think we have some special recognitions tonight.
Indeed, we do. Tonight, we are recognizing a very intelligent group of eighth grade students who have earned recognition in the 2019 Duke University Talent Identification Program, better known as Duke TIP. This year, eight Newton County School System students qualified for state recognition in Duke TIP for their excellent performance on either the SAT or the ACT last school year while they were enrolled in seventh grade. Each year, seventh grade students in Duke University's 16-state talent search region are selected to participate in this prestigious program. School counselors, teachers, and administrators help Duke University identify academically talented students for consideration. Once their application is approved, the students are given the opportunity to take either the SAT or the ACT college entrance exam. In order to receive state-level recognition, students must meet one of the following criteria. And it's a pretty rigorous set of standards, so listen carefully. Students taking the ACT must score 22 or greater on English, Math, or Science, or 23 or greater on the ACT reading test. Students taking the SAT must score 540 or greater on Math, or 550 or greater on evidence-based reading and writing. Keeping in mind that those scores are really good for high school juniors or seniors. However, the students here tonight excelled on these college entrance exams as seventh grade students. Just imagine what their scores will look like when they take the college entrance exams in high school. Students, when I call your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Elhaji Traor. Elhaji is an eighth grade student at Clements Middle School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke TIP program as a result of his outstanding performance on the science portion of the ACT exam. Congratulations, Elhaji. Yay. Matthew Mullenax. Matthew is an eighth grade student at Veterans Memorial Middle School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program as a result of his excellent performance on both the ACT reading and the ACT science. Congratulations, Matthew. Shania Stewart. Shania is an eighth grade student at Veterans Memorial Middle School, and she earned state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program as a result of her excellent results on the evidence-based reading and writing portion of the SAT. Congratulations, Shania. Grayson Pointer. Grayson is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke TIP program as a result of his outstanding results on both the ACT reading and the ACT science. Congratulations, Grayson. Charlotte Thompson. Charlotte is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and she earned state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program as a result of her excellent performance on both the reading and English portions of the ACT exam. Congratulations, Charlotte. Kishal Dwaram. Kishal is an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program as a result of his outstanding performance on the reading portion of the ACT. Congratulations, Kishal. Two of our students could not attend this evening's meeting, but I want to recognize them publicly as well. Caleb Ekadem is an eighth grade student at the Newton County Theme School, and he earned state recognition in the Duke Talent Identification Program as a result of his outstanding results on the math, science, and reading portions of the ACT. And Emma Lumpkin, also an eighth grade student at Newton County Theme School, earned state recognition in the Duke TIP program as a result of her excellent performance on the math portion of the ACT. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our Duke Talent Identification Program students one more time for their excellent performance on either the SAT or the ACT. As I already stated, it's critical to remember that these students took these exams as seventh grade students and did extremely well, well enough to earn state recognition. And so you can just imagine what it will look like when they get to high school. I just can't wait to follow you through to see exactly where you land with your ACT or SAT, whichever you choose. Good job, guys. We appreciate your hard work and dedication. I know it was probably nerve-wracking sitting for a high school test as a seventh grade student. Were you all nervous at all?
Yes.
Yes, I probably would. Yeah. Because they don't take the test with other seventh grade students. They take them with high school students. So it's a little scary when you have to go in there and you're among juniors and seniors in high school, and you're just, what, 12 years old? So we are very, very proud of you. Congratulations again, and I'm looking for great things from each of you in the future. I'd also like to thank our principals and administrators who are here this evening to support our students. We are grateful for your service and for setting and creating the conditions so that our students have the opportunity to excel. Ms. Henderson Baker, this concludes our special recognition this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Fury. And just want to reiterate again, congratulations to all of you, and congratulations to the parents as well. Thank you for what you do for your students. Educating students is a partnership, so we just can't depend on the school. It's a partnership, and that's the reason why your kids are seated here, seated here in front of us. And I hope that you guys will take advantage of all the awesome camps and workshops that come along with being a Duke TIP scholar to prepare you for your future. So congratulations again. So at this time... Any other board members want to say anything? Okay. At this time, we're going to go ahead and go with our meeting. We would love for you to stay with us for the remainder of our meeting, but we do understand that tomorrow is the school day. So therefore, since you have scholars, your scholars may want to do their homework. So if you would like to leave us, you may at this time. So we'll give you a few seconds to decide if you're going to stay, if you're going to go.
Hey, make me. Good, how are you?
Oh, awesome.
Imagine. Thank you.
Okay, public participation. I don't think we have any. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Mr. Turner moved it. Mr. Bailey second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Five-zero. Approval of the minutes, please. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Coggins, second by Mr. Turner. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Thank you, superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and madam superintendent, good evening.
Good evening.
There are no changes to items A, B, or C in the superintendent's reports, but we do have item D, which is a strategic plan update for you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Barr. Do we have any questions on A, B, or C before we do the presentation? Okay, thank you. You can go ahead.
Okay. So we'll need to adjust the lights and the screen. And then you all may want to get comfortable. I advocated for a summary version of the update, but Mr. Roundtree and Dr. Thomas and Ms. Sanders insisted that it be very comprehensive. So that's the version that we'll be going with tonight. So as you may remember, on February 12, 2018, we all met for a community engagement meeting at the Newton College and Career Academy. And we began to focus on the school district's strengths and some of its challenges. That meeting was followed by a number of other meetings in which we engaged stakeholders, including district staff, community members, parents, and students. The strategic improvement plan that emerged from that process was officially approved by you all, the Board of Education, on June 19, 2018. Tonight, we are pleased to be able to provide you with the first strategic improvement plan update for the 2018-19 school year. What you see before you is the strategy map for the school district and the strategic improvement plan. And as you may recall, you can follow the strategic map by starting at the left, the bottom left-hand corner, where it says, "Ensure a systemic culture of safety," and move to the right-hand side of the screen. The next one is, "Provide high-quality organizational and instructional supports." And you see the next one and the next one that follows. If you do all of those things, we will have organizational and operational effectiveness. And then from there, it works up. All the performance objectives work from left to right, and then from, on the goal areas, they work from the bottom to the top. So if we have organizational and operational effectiveness, we will have a good culture and climate communication, we will have a high-quality workforce, and ultimately, student achievement and success. So that is a review of our strategy map. In the presentation this evening, we're going to review each of the four goal areas and the associated performance objectives and initiatives. We will highlight one initiative for each performance objective so that you may better understand the work that has been undertaken as part of this plan. Also included are performance measures, which include baseline data for the 2018-19 school year and targets for the next four years. Performance measures in a couple of these areas are still, are in the process of being developed to ensure that we are measuring what's most important. You'll see that reflected in the presentation. We're going to begin with performance goal area one, Student Achievement and Success, presented by Mr. Benjamin Roundtree, the chief academic officer.
Good evening. And as we go through the update, there are a number of things that we could have included, because it's a lot of stuff in it, so we just pulled some highlights of things for you. So just, I just didn't want you to think that these are all the things that we're working on to meet our goals. Now, when I left the classroom, there was still chalkboard and chalk, and so I don't, I don't know how to work this.
Mr. Roundtree, we'll be in our technology remediation plan.
Okay, now, okay, that's what I need. Okay, thank you. All right. So Student Achievement and Success, our performance objectives and initiatives. Performance objective one is to improve student mastery of standards, and then you will see the three initiatives that are there, and you all can read, and this is a lengthy presentation, so I'm just going to highlight the performance objectives, and then you can see the initiatives there, because I will talk a little bit more about that in the presentation. Performance objective two, increase opportunities for students to achieve, to demonstrate success. And then performance objective three, increase the graduation rate. And again, each objective is supported by an initiative. Performance objective one, improve mastery of standards. And again, we had a bevy of things here. We, I pulled two here. Initiative one, increase instructional capacity of teachers in all classrooms. You all may remember that in the early part of the spring, late winter, we started talking about, with you all, the instructional coaches and their jobs and their responsibilities. And so we revisited their job duties to ensure a focus and improve, a focus on improved classroom instruction. Instructional coaches also participated in a professional learning session with Dr. Jim Knight, who is a recognized expert in instructional coaching. Additional professional opportunities will be provided during the 2019-20 school year. Initiative two, district-wide classroom management support. During the 2018-19 school year, select staff participated in professional learning about behavior interventions at work in the classroom. All new teachers, that was last year, so all new teachers, when they came in for new teacher induction program, they all went through the training this year as well, during the summer as well. And as a matter of fact, our expert and consultant, Ms. Dean, will be working with them throughout the school year. She's slated to come three days next week. She will be working with the teachers from the, all day on Monday, the 26th, and then on the 27th and 28th, she'll work with elementary teachers, new teachers in the afternoon, and the secondary ones in the afternoon. But in the morning, she's going to be working with veteran teachers here. So everybody will have an opportunity to get this. I wish we had time for us to go through the evaluations, forms that she received when she was here for the new teacher induction. Not one person had anything negative to say about her, and if they used her strategies, they will have a very successful year in the area of classroom management. Performance objective one, improve student mastery of standards. These are our performance measures. Third-grade reading, the fifth-grade reading, and eighth-grade reading as outlined in the, captured in the end-of-grade exam from the milestones. We use last year as our, as our baseline, 2018-19, so that is our actual in each of those categories. And then you'll see the incremental growth all the way up to 2023. We are utilizing the state's model as it relates to the growth. Obviously, we want our targets to be higher, and that's actually what we're going to shoot for, but we're using the state's model because this is what they use in order to score us as it relates to CCRPI and things of that nature. So you see the actual for third-grade reading, fifth-grade reading, and then eighth-grade reading, and then you'll see the incremental targets through the years. We are also improving student mastery of standards, continuing their performance measures. Then at our high school, will be the ninth-grade literature end-of-course exam, and then the American literature end-of-course exam. And you see the actual, we had 82% this year in ninth-grade lit, and 76% in American lit, and then you see the incremental growth there all the way up to 2023. Performance measures, continuing in the area of math, you will see we're using as our measure, fifth-grade math as measured on the end-of-grade tests for milestones, as well as eighth-grade math on the end-of-grade test for milestones. Our actual for 2018-19 for fifth grade was 71%, and our actual for eighth grade was 66%. And then you see the incremental increases all the way up to 2023. For high school, we are continuing with math as well. Algebra I integrated tests and geometry integrated tests as measured by the milestone. Our actual for 2018-19 was 54% for algebra I and 60% for geometry. And then you see the incremental growth measures there all the way up to 2023. Performance objective two deals with increased opportunities for students to demonstrate success. And what we just showed you are our data based on students' performance on the tests. But we know that that is not the end-all for kids, that kids can demonstrate success in any number of areas. And we're trying to, of course, while keeping the focus on their academic achievement, we also want to broaden our scope as it relates to defining what student success is. So we have identified, as you are very well familiar with, the district-wide measures that reflect the district's portrait of graduate. If you go to any of our schools and enter any of our individual classrooms, you will see that placard posted. We have it here even in the superintendent's conference room, where you have your executive session meetings, because we want that to be a reminder to everybody that that's what we're looking for as our students prepare for graduation and to enter the post-secondary or the workforce. But, so we are going to start working with being a part of a statewide initiative, which is spearheaded by PAGE, which is a professional education organization, True Accountability. And it is an educator-led, evidence-based, student-centric, community-minded system that moves far beyond test scores and A-through-F rankings. Rather, True Accountability provides both an accurate, holistic performance measure and a thorough accounting to the students, families, and communities for whom educators and schools exist. We will be joining with other members of the education community on the 29th of August, which is next week, for a symposium as we begin our work, you know, in this area. Performance objective two, we are increasing opportunities for students to demonstrate success. Our performance measures, this is a work in progress. We are beginning to gather the data now. What I asked each principal to do was to send me all of the clubs and organizations and other co- and extracurricular activities that are offered at their particular schools. And so that information has already been gathered. They will keep numbers of participation throughout the school year, as well as there may be some new activities that they'll add. We'll capture all of that information in the spring so that we'll set a baseline, so we'll know the number of children who are participating in these various extra and co-curricular activities. And then what we will do from there is then seek each year to increase those numbers, again, trying to move away from having so much emphasis on testing and giving children an opportunity to demonstrate what they know and what they can do in other ways. Performance objective three, increase the graduation rate. We know if children feel comfortable in school, they're more apt to come, and they're more apt to do well. So we have implemented the No Place for Hate program district-wide. The school system is one of only two districts in the southern region to earn the designation as a No Place for Hate system by the Anti-Defamation League, as each school in the district participates in the program. No Place for Hate is an initiative of the Anti-Defamation League offered free to schools. The initiative is designed to rally the entire school around the goal of creating a welcoming community committed to stopping all forms of bias and bullying. Upon completion of the required program components, schools receive a No Place for Hate banner, and I'm very proud to say that all of our schools have the banner, and we are at 100% implementation. So now our objective is to maintain. And I've just told the next slide. And so you see 100% is our actual, and we're going to, our goal is to maintain, so that's why we changed the verbiage. And the strategic plan is a very fluid document, and we make adjustments as we go. So we changed it because we, we had a target of 30%, but we were at 100, so we changed it to maintain rather than them completing. We want to decrease the percentage of students suspended 10 days or more. The percentage now is actually 2.9%. We try our very best to keep students in school and not to suspend them out of school, especially for a high number of days. So you see for the 2018-19 school year, 2.9% of the students were suspended 10 days or more, and as you see, the incremental decreases as we go up to 2023. Our next performance measure there is we want to decrease the percentage of students with disabilities who are suspended from school. We have things in place to help and support them, but then there are times when they do step outside of the services that we're trying to provide for them. So you see, we have, the percentage is 19%. And so we're working very diligently to decrease that number. So you see, our target for 2023 is to have only 9%, well, our goal is to have none of them, but our target is 9%. And again, we're working with the model that the state uses. Increase the graduation rate is performance objective three. We want to increase the percentage of ninth-grade students who earn five or more credits. Ninth grade is a huge predictor of whether or not a student will complete his high school, his or her high school education. So we want to start focusing on them as soon as they get to the high school. And so in order to become a, and we don't really retain them in ninth grade, it's all based on ours, what your credits, what your classification is. So we want to increase the number of them who earn five or more, because, you know, anything less than that, then they will not be retained, but their classification will not be a sophomore. So this year, we were at 91%. 91% of the ninth graders had enough credits to be deemed sophomores for this school year, and you will see that we have the incremental increases going all the way to 95% by the year 2023. And then we want to increase the graduation rate at all schools. We don't have that data right now. As a matter of fact, Dr. Jordan and Ms. Fury have been gathering all the pieces of that, so Ms. Fury can sign off. So that, of course, we haven't, I don't know, they may have submitted it by now, but the state has not released it. So that information is to be determined, and we will plug that in once we get this year's, the previous year's graduation rate. And that concludes my portion of the work that I do with the strategic plan. Are we taking questions now? I'm going to have to step out and leave, so I won't be here at the end. So if you have some questions for me as it relates to that, I can entertain them now. Or did we say we weren't entertaining? I don't, I can't remember what we said we were going to do.
That's fine, Mr. Roundtree. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Roundtree, because he needs to leave?
Yes, but I've got a long question.
Okay, that's fine.
No, it's not long, because I just noticed that the targets, the objectives, and I noticed you said you were using the state models, but it looked like we were trying to count to 72, 68, I mean, 67, 68, 69, 70. Can we raise those up a couple of points, so we have very strong and high objectives?
Well, what we're doing is, this is what we're putting out, but behind the scenes, we are, of course, working to get to, for higher, towards higher targets. But we didn't want to put something out that, that was different from what the state was holding us accountable for. And we've all said in our private conversations that we know the targets aren't very high, but that's, that's what the state is holding us accountable for, and we're at least trying to meet that. But, but behind the scenes, we're working feverishly to far exceed what, you know, what the targets are.
Okay, I understand, but I got to get this out. Don't you think the board would hold you accountable first for the state, and they won't hi, we won't hire numbers?
Yes, I, I mean, I do, but I would also hope that the board would understand that, that we're trying to be in sync with the state. We don't want to get out of sync with them publicly. Now, of course, again, we are, in some of the areas, we will, we will, you know, exceed, you know, the target, but it's just not comfortable, in my opinion, to step out and be out of sync with, you know, with what the state, because we also, because their formula has been tried and tested and gone through analysis and things of that nature, and we don't want to put a target up there that may not be attainable based on, just based on a statistical analysis. Because if we just throw a number up there, we're just throwing a number up there without any science behind if we can attain that number.
And they may change it.
And the state very well may change it.
As they've done in the past.
Yes, yeah. And of course, this is fluid, you know, and what we said in the meeting is, say, for example, if next year, this is ninth-grade lit, if 2019-20, 87% of the, of the students meet the target, well, then we'll go back and adjust the target for '21, '22, and '23, and make it higher than the 87%. So I think that may be what you're speaking to.
So, I appreciate it.
Sure, all right.
I have a quick question about, you said the ninth grade, five or more credits, it was a key indicator of whether or not they graduate.
Yeah, well, not necessarily, yeah, ninth grade, if studies show that if we can get a child to 10th grade, his chances of graduating, if we can get him there on time, too, his chances of graduating and graduating on time increases significantly.
Okay, I was just looking for what significantly is, that's all.
I don't have a number just right now. That's just, just, just from my reading of, you know, of education studies. But ninth grade, the studies also show that the transition from eighth to ninth is the most difficult transition of an education career, even more difficult from high school to college. So that's why we're, you know, we're focusing on trying to get, make sure that they get to 10th grade.
I've got one transitioning into ninth grade now, so.
Oh, yeah, so you understand.
And that's why a lot of schools will practice like ninth-grade academies to try to specialize in supporting them, because the literature will tell you that if they don't make it out of ninth grade on schedule with their credits, the likelihood of them ever catching up is a really hard thing. Even though we have all kinds of safety nets for high school kids, the, the drive and desire sort of dissipates the further they get away from reaching that goal.
Yeah, just sounds like you're, you want your top-notch, best educators in the ninth grade for sure in your high school.
Yes, strong educators. We want them everywhere.
Thank you. I know you do. 100%, 100%, I got it.
Oh, my goodness. Goal Area Two, High Quality Workforce. This is going to be, this is going to be Ms. Nari Sanders, our Director of Human Resources.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Like Mr. Roundtree, I have a few things that I want to share. I don't want to necessarily have to read each slide, but I do want to tell you a little bit about what we're doing in Goal Area Two related to... related to high-quality workforce. Here you will see the Performance Objectives and Initiatives. We have three objectives. The first one, to improve the recruitment process to identify higher and higher high-quality staff. And we have two initiatives there. Performance Objective Two, Increase Capacity of Staff to Deliver and Support High-Quality Instruction. You'll see our two initiatives related to training and providing feedback regarding staff evaluations. And then Performance Objective Three, Improve the Retention Rate of High-Performing Personnel. Performance Objective One, one of the initiatives that I want to share with you is related to the study that has already been completed. It's, one of the initiatives was to conduct an analysis of salaries, benefits, and pay incentives of comparable school districts. We have done that as it relates to the analysis of teacher salaries. And that was completed during the 2019 fiscal year and resulted in a 2% pay increase. And that was in addition to the governor's $3,000. And that was effective this school year. Now we're also looking at analyzing the pay for our classified personnel and district supplements to see if there are other areas where we can increase and improve our salaries and benefits and pay incentives. And related to this Performance Objective, we do have our performance measures that we plan to continue to work on and gather data on. This one is to increase the percentage of newly hired teachers with levels three and four on the TEACs instrument. This is something where I've been gathering and collecting the data as we hire new teachers. It will be available in September, next month. And then, once I have that actual data, then I'll be able to set targets for the following school year so that we'll be able to track this and measure how we're able to bring teachers on who have higher levels of performance on the TEACs evaluation. Performance Objective Two, Increase Capacity of Staff to Deliver and Support High-Quality Instruction. One of the initiatives for the district is to provide employees with relevant training to improve and enhance performance and productivity. We already have a comprehensive professional learning plan in place and it is based on our district initiatives and the individual training needs of our staff. We will continue to monitor and refine professional learning offerings to ensure that relevant training is available and accessible to all of our employees. And then we also want to continue to review the professional learning program at the district level to ensure that it is aligned to the strategic plan. As it relates to performance measures for this, one of the performance measures that we have already started based on the last school year as the baseline is to increase the number of walkthroughs conducted by instructional coaches. For this past school year, the number was 2043. And the targets that you see there are based on a 3% increase so that each year we're able to have a higher number of walkthroughs from instructional coaches. And of course, that feedback goes directly back to our teachers to help them in the classroom with instruction. Performance Objective Three, Improve Retention Rate of High-Performing Personnel. Initiative Two is to develop strategies to retain high-quality personnel. For this particular initiative, we have already implemented a strategy that is tied to the UPEET survey. It is administered to all of our teachers in the district twice a year. And this past 2018-19 school year was the first year that we administered the survey twice. It consists of 75 items and 21 categories. They are tied to K-12 teacher experiences based on previous research related to teacher engagement and retention. The survey includes areas such as principal leadership, teacher collaboration, and school safety. It is administered confidentially to teachers and the results are presented to our school administrators electronically via an interactive dashboard. And they are able to look at the data, look at the responses to the questions, even down to analyzing how particular grade levels of teachers have responded to those questions. And then they can tie strategies around that in terms of how they can improve in those areas and also get feedback from those grade levels and teachers. The purpose of the survey is to help administrators understand strengths and weaknesses in their school environment, which may affect climate and culture, and to provide insight about the engagement level of their teachers. And the last survey that was done in May of this year, the engagement score was at 70. So when it comes to improving the retention rate, there are several performance measures that we have started collecting data on and plan to continue to measure. The first is to reduce the number of schools with less than an 80% retention rate. For the 18-19 school year, there were nine schools. And our target, you'll see, we want to reduce that number of schools that have 80% retention rate or less. And by 2022-23, we hope to be at five schools. Increase the Number of Staff Publicly Recognized for Positive Contributions to the School District at BOE Meetings and/or the District Website. This past school year, there were 106 employees that were recognized. And we want to, we've set targets to increase that by 3% each year. And by 2022-23, that would be 118. And then increase upbeat engagement scores from the survey. As I said, the score this past year was 70 and we want to increase that each year. And by 2022-23, we hope to meet the target of 74. And that is all I have. I will ask if you have questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
For Goal Area Three, Culture, Climate, and Communication, Dr., and I will pronounce her correctly, Dr. Sheila Thomas. Although I enjoy mispronouncing much more.
You practiced that all day, didn't you? Good evening. Following my colleagues, I want to do the same thing, which is share information as it relates to culture, climate, and communication and really highlight the performance objectives and share with you some of the things that we're doing as far as initiatives to meet that specific objective. So in the area of culture, climate, and communication, there are three different performance objectives. The first one is to provide equitable and inclusive learning and work environments at all levels of the district. There are three initiatives that are associated with this performance objective. As it relates to Performance Objective Number Two, Improve the Quality of Two-Way Communications with All Stakeholders. There are two initiatives that's associated with the Performance Objective Number Two. And then the last Performance Objective Number Three is Increase Effective Community Partnerships. And there's one initiative associated with that Performance Objective. So there are a couple of things that I would like to highlight as it relates to Performance Objective Number One, Provide Equitable and Inclusive Learning and Work Environments at All Levels of the District. When we look at Initiative Number One, Assess and Provide Equitable Services to Subgroups. One thing that we systematically do every year is all of our schools meet in the summer. They have a representative group of people from their school. So the principal, assistant principal, it may be their leadership team. They pull in teachers, counselors, parents, paraprofessionals. But they all meet and they look at the data, their school's data, specific school data, whether it's data from the academic standpoint. It could be perception data, any type of survey data. They look at attendance data, discipline data. And looking at this data, they conduct a comprehensive needs assessment. So when they analyze the data, they look to see what are the strong points based on these data points that they're assessing? What are the strong things that are going on in the school? And what are some of the areas of concern that they need to work on? So as a team, they look at these data points and really dissect the data by subgroups to see what are the areas of concerns and what do we need to do as a school to address those concerns, again, by subgroups? And not only do they look at it by subgroups, they go on to work within the groups to see what can we do for our students? What can we do for our teachers, our faculty and staff? And what can we do for our parents? Again, looking at the subgroup data to help with overall student achievement. One thing that I want to highlight as it relates to Initiative Three, Planning for Cultural Sensitivity and Responsive Training. As it relates to looking at the subgroup data, we have identified that one thing that we really want to focus in on is having culturally responsive teaching practices within the classroom. So we started this journey this summer with our Leadership Retreat. We had a gentleman by the name of Michael Selkis, who came and he provided professional learning really from the standpoint of self-reflections regarding implicit biases. So as we continue on throughout the course of the year, we will meet with our leadership staff and continue the development of our journey as it relates to cultural sensitivity and plan out what do we need to do, again, based on the data for multiple years so that we can ensure that our practices in the classroom are culturally responsive. So as it relates to the performance measures for the Performance Objective Number One, the performance measure is to increase the district's performance score on closing the achievement gap as indicated on the CCRPI report. So our baseline year is the 2018-19 school year. But right now, we are waiting for the official CCRPI report to be released and it is projected to be released in the fall of this year, 2019. So once we get that official report, this information will be updated to include the targets. Performance Objective Two, Provide Opportunities for Two-Way Communication with All Stakeholders. One thing that I would like to highlight in this area as it relates to Initiative One, Build Capacity of Staff to Work with Parents and Students as Equal Partners. We started working on this initiative back, well, really before 2019, 18-19 school year because one thing that the superintendent is very strong on and she's very passionate about is providing high-quality customer service with love. And so this is something that she has shared with us through her tenure as superintendent. But we have put a greater emphasis to really have someone come in to work with us to look at the things that we're doing in the district to see how we can enhance our communication, not only with our outside stakeholders, but with our internal stakeholders as well. So last year, we started with our front office staff at all of the schools and we provided training to include having training for our clerks, counselors, principals, assistant principals, and central office staff. So they went through a half-day training session to work on strategies that will enhance their way of communicating. So at the beginning of this school year, we had a session in the TIP, the New Teacher Training Program, for new teachers. And they went through the same training. We also will continue providing support to our new support staff that did not participate, they were not here last year to participate, but any new support staff. And we're also going to include our custodians, our bus drivers, and our cafeteria workers with this training throughout the course of the year. So one way that, or two ways that we want to measure Performance Objective Two is one, to increase the number of respondents who agree or strongly agree that they have been involved in the decision-making process at their school, that the school where their child attends. This is also a report where we get the information from the Georgia Health Climate Survey. And this report comes out and is official at the same time that the CCRPI report is. So right now, we don't have that official data, but hopefully in a few months, we will have those reports and we'll be able to add the baseline data for the 2018-19 school year and then we can include the targets. Now, as it relates to the next performance measure, Improve Results of the Customer Service Audit at the District and School Levels. We participated in a customer service audit where a team came out and they visited schools, all of the schools in the district, as well as our central office. They sent emails. They looked to see what was our response time, what was the mood and the tone of the emails that were returned. They also made phone calls. Some of the phone calls were during the busy time of the days just to see what was the response time, did we return calls? How did we interact as a district with the person that was calling on the other end? They also visited our schools to look at the buildings, the cleanliness of the buildings, the direction, the directional signs, how visible was parking, the aesthetics of the building. And then they rated our school and our school system. So we received an 85% out of 100. And the targets for the upcoming school years have been listed for you. As it relates to Performance Objective Three, Build Effective Community Partnerships. One thing that I want to highlight with Initiative One, Assess Gaps Based on End-of-Year Partner in Education Principal Survey Results. Our partners in ED have been wonderful in our district to support the schools and the school system. The East Ridge Community Church, the Jackson Lake Campus, they received the 2019 Partner of the Year Award. And one thing that our partners really do to us and for us is they come in as humans and will provide that human service, that's human interaction in the building because sometimes not only financial contributions are very helpful, but we need people to volunteer. And so we appreciate the support that all of our partners in education have provided to the school system. So there are three ways that we want to look at evaluating this Performance Objective Three. So the performance measures include expanding partnerships for the district. This is through our CTAE program, the Pathways for Work-Based Learning. Based on our baseline year, 2018-19 school year, there were 120 partnerships. And these are partnerships for work-based learning where our students are placed and given work experiences throughout the course of the year and they receive a grade for their work, the way that they have performed on their job. So then you can also see the targets as it relates to the next four years. The next performance measure is to increase the number of companies on the Advisory Work-Based Learning Advisory Committee. This is the CTAE District Advisory Committee that Dr. Tim Smith leads. And he meets with this committee throughout the course of the year periodically. And then they discuss ways that they can enhance the CTAE program and the partnerships throughout the district. And the last performance measure is to increase the number of companies participating with Connect Newton Externships. And this is a summer program. The Connect Newton Externship is for teachers. Teachers participate in a week-long externship where they, it's really a job-shallowing opportunity and it has been very successful over the past two years that it's been implemented. So, that concludes Goal Area Three. Do you all have any questions? Would you like for me to introduce you?
Alright, we are on the homestretch. Goal Area Four. Here are the performance objectives for Goal Area Four, which is organizational and operational effectiveness. The four performance objectives are, one, to ensure a systemic culture of safety; two, provide high-quality operational and instructional supports; three, increase the quality and presence of professional learning communities to improve performance and ensure continuous improvements; and then Objective Four is to increase effectiveness utilizing performance development management strategies. So we'll take a look at the first one, which is ensure a systemic culture of safety. And this one encompasses the way we communicate safety plans and also how we communicate during emergencies. As part of this initiative, the Crisis Go app is being piloted at three of our schools. A recent report on technology and school safety stated that staff members, in particular in schools, need easier and faster access to information on school safety. This app makes sure such information is via, is available to our staff via multiple technologies. And so we'll take a look at the performance measures for this one. The first one, of course, has to do with the required safety drill. How many drills, how many of our schools are meeting that expectation? This year was 97. Of course, our expectation is 100% for subsequent years. The next one is to increase the number of schools who have radios that have immediate access to the 911 center. And so as you may know, the county is under... And so as you may know, the county is under, is considering revamping their nine-one-one center. And so we are staying in touch with that process to make sure that our efforts align with theirs. The third performance measure is to increase the number of staff who have app-based access to online safety plan. The thirteen percent you see for 2019, twenty represents those three schools in which that app is being piloted. And then finally, increase the number of schools with access to app-based emergency notification system. And that is the same thirteen percent. So hopefully, the pilot will go well. You folks will approve it and we will have the access, our staff will have access to that kind of technology. Performance Objective Two is to provide high-quality operational instructional supports, highlighting here Initiative Two, which is to implement software that integrates core business functions such as finance, payroll and benefits, and human resources. An ERP enterprise, which is an enterprise resource planning solution, eliminates repetitive processes and reduces the need to manually enter information. An ERP system also streamlines business practices. The procurement department has worked with a wide range of district stakeholders during this process to better understand how business, how these processes could be streamlined. And an RFP was developed to reflect those needs. A cross-functional evaluation team is currently evaluating those proposals. And we'll have a finalize, we'll finalize that in this month, August 2019. So most of the performance measures associated with this, and you've seen an ERP, it emerged during the strategic planning process. It also emerged during our Advanced ED Accreditation Review. And so all of the performance measures are implementation-based measures that relate to that. So implement the software. You can see the projected targets. Increase real-time access to relevant HR data for all school and district leaders. That relates to the ERP system, and you can see the timeline there. Increase access to online leave request approval process for employees, which we would think will be an added benefit to our staff while also increasing efficiencies. You can see the targets there. And then finally, increase customer satisfaction relative to technology support requests. They are currently a three-point-nine-three on the survey that's taken after a work order is complete. And you can see the targets there. Our third performance objective is to increase the quality and presence of PLCs to improve performance and ensure continuous improvement. And so as it relates to this one, as you know, access to data within a PLC, and I'll be highlighting improved access to and utilization of data by PLCs. As you know, access to data within a PLC is critical. And we have lots of data, data available for our school leaders and teachers. So our focus here is on the utilization of data. During the 2018-19 school year, school leaders and instructional coaches participated in a two-day training about how to use the Data Action Model in PLCs to identify learning and instructional gaps. Participants practiced developing action plans to address such gaps. The district is going to continue to provide this training during this school year. And so our performance measures, the performance measures related to the quality and presence of PLCs are under development. As you know, there are several interrelated components of PLCs, including shared vision and values, a collaborative culture, examining student outcomes to ensure student learning, shared personal practice, supports and shared leadership. So all of those are interrelated. And so what we don't want to do is develop measures that minimize one of those important aspects and overemphasize another aspect of PLCs. So Dr. Warfield, Dr. Mosley, and Mr. Roundtree in here, so I'll put his name in it too, will be working on the development of performance measures in this area to ensure that we are truly increasing the presence of high-quality professional learning communities. And then Performance Objective Four is increase, increase effectiveness utilizing performance development, performance development management strategies. Initiative One to highlight here is develop effective performance management system to include goal setting and coaching. An effective performance development management process ensures that all our employees receive the feedback that they need to encourage their development. And it also includes a goal-setting process that's aligned with the district's mission, with the district's strategic plan so that they can see how their work intersects with the district's vision and the strategic plan. The evaluation system for teaks and leaks contains elements that can be aligned with the strategic plan. And you can see a crosswalk on the right for leaders, how the strategic plan crosswalks to the leaks evaluation process. Performance evaluation process and instruments which are aligned to the strategic plan will need to be developed for other employees. During this school year, a new performance management evaluation process will to be developed for school nutrition employees. And then we can use that to adapt that, adapt that tool for other employees within the school district. That takes us here to performance measures. And so the performance measures are to increase the percentage of non-certificated staff, and other staff evaluated utilizing a performance management system. And so that's going to take us a little time. And so hopefully, the 2021 school year, that represents the approximate number of folks in school nutrition, which are part of the non-certificated staff. And that will move us forward in that direction. On the right-hand side, you see those numbers that are already captured with teaks and leaks. And incorporating non-certificated personnel will keep those numbers moving forward so that everybody is utilizing a performance development management process. That takes us to slide number forty-one. So, and this is the slide you've probably been looking for. Tonight, we have reviewed our Strategic Improvement Plan consisting of four goal areas, thirteen performance objectives, twenty-eight initiatives, and thirty-two performance measures. Developed in partnership with the community that we serve, it is a comprehensive plan designed to ensure continuous improvement and to ensure our students will be well-rounded and prepared for the future. So I appreciate and the staff appreciates your kind attention to this report and your support of the Newton County School System's vision. And with that, Madam Chair, the report, Strategic Plan Update is concluded.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bar. Any questions for Dr. Bar?
I have not really a question.
You missed around trees.
We are forming these partnerships with different business owners in the community. Have we ever considered doing, where they go into the school and work with the principals for a day? And we've considered expanding that to citizens and let them come in and get a better understanding of everyday, day-to-day activities that go on in our school system.
We, I think we're doing a couple of things. We're looking at the VILA program, which is operated by the Georgia School Boards Association, where we bring people in and we give them a look at the school district and its operations so that they have a better understanding of the work that we're trying to do. And so that's, that's one, one part. And of course, the principal for a day is another part.
And those are?
But we could certainly consider.
Those are citizens?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, citizens invited in to participate in that program. And I believe it's eight or nine units long. And so they learn about the finance, the strategic plan, curriculum instruction, operations, visit a school, I think is part of it. So it's a course that would provide them that kind of information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
First and foremost, just the strategic plan itself is brilliant. Great work on it by this team and the community and all the stakeholder input. But this update was great. This is amazing information. It's data points. I mean, the objectives, initiatives, it's just, it's laid out brilliantly. So kudos to the superintendent and the team. I know the executive team spends a lot of time on this. It just, it's, it's beautiful because it guides us. We know what to do every day, how to do it, and who needs to be doing it. Secondly, can I get a copy of that report? Like, can we get a copy of that emailed to us?
Mr. Bar says no.
We'd be happy. She was misunderstanding.
Okay. The third, the third comment of four, the third one is, I noticed several of these when we're looking at the data, it's like in fall, we'll get some more data. In the fall, we'll get some more data. Is there a way to move this annual, I guess this is going to be an annual report, where we get to look at the same slides with more data filled in? Is it possible just to move it to a later date so that we have accurate data instead of? I'd hate to come back again in August next year and go, well, you know, in a few more months, we'll have some more data.
Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll probably make a switch. We just wanted to, to show you where we are and what we're looking at and the work that's being done to, to step it up. And then, once we get the new information, I mean, there's not, not a problem with us coming back and, and doing a quick, not doing the whole presentation, but pulling out the slides that are missing the data to say, here's where we are. So that you'll have it once we, we get it all pulled together.
Okay. And then the last thing is the upbeat, upbeat survey results. And then we have like seventy percent participation. I'm not sure what the standard is or what we're, and I saw where we're, we're going to increase it by one percent every year, but.
Yeah.
My, I would just, is that something that we can get our hands on too? The actual survey results? Or is that something you guys are holding close to?
Well, it's a, it's a work in progress. We actually, we're actually be, so let me answer the first question. The seventy percent is an engagement score. So it measures twenty-one category, seventy-five indicators. And according to the company, we're doing very well, like a seventy, especially considering we have spring of eighteen to spring of nineteen. And there was significant growth in many, many of the areas. In terms of sharing the results with you, I, I don't have an issue with sharing any of the results if you want to see them. But how, what happens? So I think that's probably the most important thing. So the data is nice, but then what happens with the data is, I think, the most important part. And so the company actually, we identify this, the way there are struggles. And then the company actually works with every single principal and carries professional conversations and dialogues, dialogue with each principal, addressing their specific deficiencies, areas where they might improve. And then recommends industry recommendations for improvement. So for example, one of the areas that we tend to have a, a lower score is teacher involvement in the hiring practices. And so when you talk to principals, they'll say, well, we, we were trying to spare our teachers from having to do the extra work. And so now we have the survey that says, well, they don't want to be spared. They want to be engaged. And so the company will cut, came in and said, here are some things that you can do to immediately change that. And they, so principals have implemented. And the growth that we saw in just one year's time was like fabulous. So the problem is that the reporting mechanism is a little bulky. So we have to work with the company to try to get a report that is usable to, to you guys. So we'll look at it to see how we can make it happen. But we're doing, we're doing some really great work around that. And we've had, the company has come in and done district-wide professional development to teach us things that they've seen across the nation that are effective to engage teachers because we know when they're engaged, then they, then they tend to stay. So we're, we're a long way to answer. I don't know if we can get you a report that will be helpful to you, but we will do our best to make it happen.
Yeah, even a smattering of the results would be something just to, I'd like to see the, what it looks like.
Sure.
The flavor.
Absolutely.
Again, just to end, this is, this is amazing work. I get a little excited about the strategic plan and the update that goes with it just because it's, I, I think it's a, something we can show to the community and go, look, this is, this is how we're improving in, in the areas that we're deficient and need improvement on. But we can quantify it and it's very, very encouraging. Great work.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Also, just to, to parallel with the work of the strategic plan and the update that you just saw, the superintendent's strategic plan report is also a way to keep you posted on all of the activities that are being done in each of the broad categories. So when you look at the report, it was designed in such a way that we're, we're not going to put and measure every single thing that we're doing. We're looking at broad measurement tools. But then, when you look at your superintendent's report, it will say, these are the things that are occurring in student achievement and success. Just so you know that, that this isn't just the only thing that we're working on. There's all these other pieces that come together to help us improve our results. So that's a great place to look.
As well as our agenda. Nobody mentioned our agenda. So our agenda, the electronic governance system we use simply is tied into the strategic report as well. So if you guys have noticed, when they present, they'll say this is a part of Goal Area One of the strategic plan. So now the things that we're doing policy-wise and approval-wise ties into the report. So we can see from our standpoint how we're aligning ourselves to the strategic plan as well.
Yeah. I just, that works, the data points with the scorecard.
Yeah.
Like, I can follow a box score of a baseball game. You can look at the, the boxes and know how we're doing. That's really helpful for me. I like the words on the page that you guys showed, the stories that you tell. Those are beautiful too. I like that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any more comments, feedback, questions? May I have a motion to approve superintendent's report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, then moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-zero, thank you. No old business, new business?
Madam Chair, items A through E are unchanged and ready for board action.
Thank you, Dr. Bar. Items A through E, no changes to those items. Is there a motion to move it forward?
Motion to approve items A through E.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second on the floor. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero, thank you. F and G, I believe I have F. I may have G too. I believe I do, actually. So F is the local board governance training. So we have looked at the agenda. For those that don't know, the state requires boards across the state of Georgia to have six hours of training together, nine hours individually. So we have to choose a training class to go to together because we all love each other.
Yes.
And so we chose March eleventh is going to be our date. Nine to twelve, we're doing school finance. So March eleven, nine to twelve. And then G is the Georgia Vision Project for Public Education. And we had that read last week. This is just annually saying we still align ourselves with it. So items F and G.
To be approved?
I'm making a motion to approve it.
Okay, moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five-zero, thank you.
Item H? The superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as outlined in executive session.
Okay, is there a motion for item H?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five-zero, thank you. Other matters of interest? Nobody? Okay.
We have early release Friday. There's early release on Friday. And there's a big football game on Friday. Al Kovey is home and Newton is away, but they will be playing one another. And we would sure love it if everyone would come support our Al Kovey Tigers and our Newton Rams.
Okay, thank you. Any other matters of interest? Having none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm needing adjourned, five-zero, eight oh nine PM.
Thank you.
You know I won't be going until it gets dark out.
Will be?
I gotta go to the hospital. Eva and Bill, my mother, are all in the hospital, so.